Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. We will begin our special joint meeting, no pun intended, of the Fairfax Town Council and Fairfax Planning Commission to conduct a town forum on cannabis policy. And joining us this evening is Mr. David McPherson of HDL Companies, who will give a presentation on kind of the overlay of state laws and the interplay between local laws and state laws when it comes to cannabis regulations. And a couple of procedural points here, just want to note that we have four of our town council members here, Renee Goddard, Barbara Kohler, Bruce Ackerman, and myself, Peter Lacks. And just a procedural point, just want to also just take a roll call of any planning commissioners who are here. If you could just raise your hands. So we have, for the record, we have Mimi Newton in the back, Phil Green, Laura Kerlehan, and Cindy Swift and Michelle Rodriguez. Anyone else from the planning commission?
Esther.
Oh, I'm sorry, Esther. Okay, then with that, then, Carrot, would you mind introducing our speaker? And we'll get started. Throughout the meeting, if folks have brief questions for points of clarification, we will entertain a few questions. We will also be passing out cards for people to write down questions. We'll have an opportunity for more extensive comment towards the end, but if there are any questions, we'd want to just limit them to just clarifications of points that are being brought up. So with that, Carrot?
Sure, I think I've turned on everything properly, since Michelle's not here. And then just a point of order, that did the council approve the agenda and affidavit of posting?
Oh, good point.
So I make a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting.
Second.
So Kohler and Goddard.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, just trying to reflect it properly, so I don't get in trouble tomorrow. See, okay, great. So with that, I think I will turn it over to David McPherson. HDL Companies, they are, they have, I don't know how many hundreds of clients, and I know he's probably done hundreds of these presentations to municipalities. They are expert in the field. And with that, I think I'd like to turn it over to David.
Thank you, Carrot. It's a pleasure being with you guys today. It's a beautiful little town. It's perfect weather today, so that's wonderful being here. So just a little bit about us, so those people understand a little about what HDL is. We represent 400 cities and counties in primary in California. We do not represent industry or anyone else, so I think that's an important thing to note. Out of our 400 clients, we work with now roughly about 125 of them related to cannabis-related issues. In the last three years, when we started this cannabis management program, our staff for the cannabis is made up of former regulators and people that have been involved with the cannabis in the states of Colorado, Nevada and California, and in the counties. Mark Lovelace is a trimmed-out board supervisor for Humboldt County, so you may know him. And then I was the first person in the country to actually tax and regulate the industry out of the city of Oakland, when I started my career there almost nine years ago. In that three years, since we've been doing this for those 125 clients, we have done application processing in behalf of our city and county agencies of over 1,200 applications. So we have seen different parts of the state, of how it's evolving, what are the business plans, what kind of strategy you're doing. You know, we've been, we have facilities that are as big as a million square feet to ones that are as small as 500 square feet, depending on the activity. In the last three years, it's been like a quicksand, just constantly moving at the state regulations, and of course, how you're adapting here at the local level. And then we'll talk about some of the legislative things that have done that. And a part of that is being regulators of this for those three states, is we've actually done 11,000 compliance inspections and investigations on cannabis businesses, where there's not even that many in the state right now. So you can imagine the experience and knowledge base that we bring to this discussion from the regulatory side. So this is kind of a little bit of the agenda, just a checklist, things that we're going to talk about. So you can see, and then if I, you know, if you had, we have questions both from the council and some of the people in the audience. We probably could get to them, or if you write them down. Are we going to hand those out as we go? Forget about that.
Forgot. We have cards and some pens, if you want to write your questions down on a card, and then we can group them, and then David could answer the questions.
And then here's some more, some of the things that we will cover. So we really try to look at covering everything that, to kind of just make it a full completion. Oops. So, you know, one of the things that we've looked at over time, and I think it's more of a cultural things, and we'll talk about values, core value elements, but we've really seen over time paradigm shifts. In the 1930s, we saw a paradigm shift of, you know, alcohol being banned and prohibited, and all of a sudden, the transition of that. Then we see in the 1950s, there's concerns of health for smoking of tobacco and the healthy issues of that, so all of a sudden, we tax that. We talk about how we're going to regulate the kind of oversight for that. In the 1980s, we get to a point where we're talking about having Indian casinos in California as opportunities for cities and communities to have that. And here we are, and, you know, in the, now where we've transitioned into 20 years of talking about what cannabis and marijuana is, as far as a product from Compassionate Use Act to SB 420, to actually having Prop 64 on there. So when you look at statewide, the acceptance of it, you know, it was a little more than a 50-plus one easily in there. And in Marin County, you know, even more understanding and acceptance of that, of that change in transition. And for your town, you can see it's way up there. That's significantly one of the highest numbers in the state as far as acceptance of a yes vote for Prop 64. So I think the comfort zone with that changes because of that, as far as the understanding of the rules and what's out there, at least from a consumption standpoint, and understanding of that as something that's acceptable as a community. So as we move through this, we then look at some of the things that have changed on us, and knowing the rules, the first thing that I want to talk about, because in the last six months, this has been an issue. Everyone says, oh, what is Jeff Sessions doing, and what has that impacted? Was that concern to us? As council members, as people that are allowing this to your community, you guys having one of the biggest cases with the Marin case associated with this, it's, you know it more dearly and probably most, probably one of the top three or four cases or situations out there. But this is kind of a more modern, as far as what's happened in the last, let's say, year, in trying to educate you as what does this mean. So in January, when Session talked about rescinding the COOP memo, for those who don't know, COOP memo, it has to do with eight court things of what they look at, as far as what they're focusing on, of taking action at the federal level, or what they will stay away from if you comply with the COOP memo. But what really that does is it was more for the U.S. Attorney General of what they were going to be allowed to do in each, in each state. And so a lot of both the industry and government would say, well, do we want to move forward with this? And, oh my God, are we going to now take steps back what we've done in the last two years since Prop 64? And really, this is, means a lot, but then it means nothing. And the reason why is because the COOP memo in the FinCEN guidelines, which is the financial side, is just that, they're guidelines. They're not law, they're not mandated. Bottom line is, yes, it's a controlled substance, but even with that, it's really about what is law. And so as you see in step three, or item number three, is that what Sessions said is that the U.S. AGs for each state will be free to decide how aggressively they're going to do something. While in California, we've already, they're already following what they're doing, they're not really changing any of what they've been doing for the last three years. And part of that has to do with the Roebacher-Bloomhauer Amendment. And before it was the Roebacher-Bloomhauer, which I love these short names, it was called the Roebacher-Fire Amendment, which was last year. That's in the federal bill for budgeting, and this kind of has a factor on even current cases of the Harbor Side and Alliance, before your guys' case even came up, where is that as long as that is law, even though it's a one-year, each year they keep changing it, as long as that is law, they can't take any action. The U.S. Attorney Generals can't really do anything to that, because the Ninth District Court, which is Northern California, had the cases associated with action being taken on Harbor Side, which was in Oakland with me, the McIntosh case that came out of that saying, no, you can't do that as long as that is law. And therefore, there's a pause on that. But for the council members that are concerned about, okay, well, what if that goes away? We think this will keep going one years until maybe we have a new person in office, and then maybe the Controlled Substance Act may change. But let's say this didn't exist and it died. What do we have? We have criminal action and civil action for you. This has already proved to not be very effective. The Harbor Side case is a good example. McIntosh is that they tried to take criminal action on certain activities, more current than your guys' case with the Marin case, and that is that they've had jury nullifications. So the local DAs and even the AGs have been reluctant to try to take any action unless it's clearly criminal from cartel-related, which is just in the last month, the two months we've had in the Sacramento region, where we've had the Chinese cartel buy a lot of homes and do things up there, and they came in and raided them and put a lot of people in jail. On the other side, the civil action element, this has specifically to the Harbor Side cases, where they tried to take the property of the property owner, and I think that was also in your guys' situation as well with the case, is that they said, no, you can't do that, it violates the Eighth Amendment. You can find them, but you can't take that property away under the Eighth Amendment. And so because they didn't successfully win that case, they've kind of shut down and not taken the aggressive action unless it's very criminal and cartel-related at this point. The last point on this is that all the Roebacher-Bloomhauer Amendment only is for medical, it is not for adult use. However, in California, we have medicinal adult use, when where it's a blend, they tend to, because it's a blend, they stay away from it. But states that may clearly are, communities that may, they could say, well, we don't even care about medicinal anymore, we're just going to do adult use. You could have problems, because the Roebacher-Bloomhauer only covers medicinal in nature. So that's very important to keep in mind. There would be no reason to reduce the medicinal, even if you wanted to add the adult use. So as we talked about the laws that came down, and you guys probably have been, had a lot of conversation on this, but in general, 2015, we had Marsowich legislation, which is the big, the breakthrough. However, the League of Cities and the Cal Chiefs Association compromised and bringing stuff together, and they thought with the industry, they came to a mutual agreement of where we're going to be. Well, industry agreed with that just shortly, because really what they wanted to do is find out where the loopholes were, and they built them in Prop 64. And so some of the things that they wanted to build in there, Prop 64 provided for them in order to have both the adult use and the medicinal. However, in trying to implement that, became a chaos at the state level. So what they ended up doing is that the governor then says, you know what, I'm not going to have my staff doing two different things, we're going to consolidate them under SB 94. It reduced some of the things that are associated with that, and then there was even things they left out, so they did some cleanup. And we'll talk about 94. First thing it is, is that it requires that you have a local contact. So if anyone tries to do it, try to go to the state and want to get a permit, each individual city has to have a local contact. If you don't, it defaults to your city clerk, so I know she's not here, so you may wonder if it is. The notifications will go to that. And then they unified what we talked about, the different permits. You still have local control. That's an important thing right now, is that you still make the decisions of what you want, what type of activities, how fast you want to move, what you want to continue band with. You can get to control all that. Limit the numbers. The zoning is the big element to this, that you don't want to do, because it gets sensitive to your land use and how you're doing your general plan. But you still have that local control under 94, and it has to do that. The Lara bill, that just is still in, up right now, so do the deliveries, Lara Ricardo Laro is trying to actually take, if you ban anything, that they want to prohibit you from being able to have deliveries come in town. So that's sitting right now in committee. And then the law does not supersede your ability to take a law enforcement action and go after local zoning requirements as well. And then it already took off, you know, the temporary permits are going, just as of last week, they were only supposed to be for six months, but because they're still trying to fine-tune anything, it's now been extended for the whole year of 2018. They've even consolidated the applications, where if you had a medical and adult use, it'd have to be separate applications. Now they're allowing to be one application to try to simplify the process for the business. And the thing that consistently is going to be the same is the testing labs, if you own any other business, you cannot be part of a business for a testing lab. And so that was the separation of duties for quality insurance and the integrity of that product, so there's no problems. And then one thing that's big, a lot of cities in the earlier stage, I'll say maybe three, four years ago, they were jumping out and doing this, then people were trying to take action against them, because they were violating CEQA. What SB 94 says, that as long as that you have a regulatory ordinance in place before that date, that you're not subject to do a CEQA just for the purposes of doing a regulatory ordinance. It doesn't mean you don't have to do a CEQA for each project, or for your land use for different activities. It just means on a regulatory ordinance, because you're just merely doing that, just like a tax measure, it doesn't trigger a CEQA just because you do a regulatory ordinance. And then the big thing that came out of this as well is because all the delivery companies being left out, and so they wanted a place to continue being part of the industry, and so it also established a non-storefront license, which is similar to a delivery. And we talk about the permits, you'll see what, I'll go into that in more detail. And then one thing that's unique, that really impacted some of the industry, especially up, and I'll say in this region a little more, is that there was a limitation on how much total you could have permit-wise. But it says, one, it says you can limit to one type-three permit for cultivation, which is 22,000 square feet of canopy. But it did not limit the total number of acres you can have. In the old, under the old law, you were limited to a total of one acre statewide, but now someone can have one type-three permit, but they can have 25 type-two permits, and they're not restricted to that one acre amount anymore, and until 2023. And so that's causing a lot of issues, more in your guys' region and up north, from the triangle from Mendocino, Lake, Trinity, and Humboldt, because there's a lot of small farmers that are going to be impacted by this. And then another unique element of this is what Prop 64 did, is consistent with that, is that if you have the health and safety card, that you're still exempt from the sales tax, but only if, I'm sorry, wrong slide. On this is that in January 2019, is the co-op and collective model goes away. So that is still, and so one of the things that the cities are having problems with is that there are still businesses out there doing business, and they can't take action on them, because they're still considered a co-op and collective. But in January of 2019, the Compassionate Use Act gets repealed, and SB 420 gets repealed, and there is no such thing as a co-op and collective under this model anymore, effective from that date. And that's very important, of being able to do enforcement for both sheriffs and police departments. So policy decision. So we have a saying saying, "Policy designed today will help shape how the industry looks like tomorrow in your community." And it doesn't matter what degree that you do something, if you stay with, you know, your current ban on adult use, and you limit some of the things that you're allowing, you still have it, because we've had some conversation about what you're doing for personal cultivation, right? The six plants, or 18 plants on a parcel, all those things have to do, the decisions you make as policymakers and as planning committee is that, commission, that has a factor in your decision as far as how that impacts your community. In Colorado, in their citizen initiative, they allowed 99 plants per person. And that's why they have a huge problem with an illegal cartel going there, growing, you know, using houses and growing a lot of plants, and then shipping it out of state because of the high volume of plants. Therefore, keeping the numbers down to six, or 12, or 18 becomes very critical as far as in that decision process. So why should you care? So a couple weeks, probably last week, when we started putting this together before we shipped it off to you, we did a quick went on weed maps, and just said, give me all the deliveries in your community. And so you can see across the bridge of, of course, that's where Vallejo is, and where they have 11 dispensaries, but you can see not only with your dispensary here, this just got back up and running, you have a whole slew of deliveries being occurring here. So as long as there's a consumer demand, you're going to have an industry in here to some degree. If you, you know, allow deliveries or not, you have, you can see it's clearly there, and also the impact on the other side of where it's coming from. And the reason I show it on the dispensary side is because to the left of you, you don't have, you still have a lot of dry cities and counties, they're part of the county, where it's not anything that, it's really on the focus of it's coming there. But again, because of the co-op and collectives still exist, a lot of those deliveries are illegally that are delivering, because there's no oversight to them right now at the state level, and there's not an enforceable amount. The state has been trying to go after and put, stop and cease orders, they've done over 1,000 of them, of putting people on notice, but it hasn't been as effective as they would like yet.
Quick question on that map.
Sure.
With the little cars with the circles, are those locations where people have accepted deliveries, or these are locations of people running delivery operations?
It's not really GPS to specific, it's just showing that there are multiple delivery vehicles that come into the community or the region there. If you open that map to try to get it there, kind of isolated it, but, you know, it'll spread out a little more, it's not, you can't isolate it to one specific GPS map that if you said, here's where it's at, it was on this street corner, it just kind of reflects of the number of businesses that are coming into town doing deliveries.
Another question, so the dispensary locations, well, Fairfax is off of that map, so that's probably why it's not showing, but...
Yeah, it's a little tiny one, you can see the Marin Alliance, yeah. Little tiny versus Fairfax, there's actually the Marin Alliance sitting there.
I don't see it. Oh, a little tiny.
It's really tiny. Yeah, real tiny.
Okay, so looking in the East Bay, there's only, it looks like there's very few.
Well, there's actually 11 in Vallejo. So just because it's tight, I was just trying to pull, it was tough to pull it all the way in and still keep it on there, so, but there are 11 dispensaries in Vallejo.
Okay, but there's several, are there, there's several in Berkeley as well, but...
Right, I was just trying to do within a 15 or 20-mile radius from you, that easy access from the bridge to the access.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that all those illegals aren't, you know, set somewhere, that they're just moving, working out of residential at this time. They're not...
Okay, thank you.
So probably in over 200 presentations that we've done, both in workshops like this and in conferences, there always seems to be a theme of the issues or concern, and working with the league and the Cal Chiefs that we represent, these are the core things that come back each time. And these are actually the core values, what we think typically are for policymakers. And when we talk about core values, you can see, we're not talking about moral values or personal values, although I think in some degree, those are tied into this indirectly. But from a policy process, the core values are here. And when the regulations that are being designed really focus on these, and you at the local level, becomes very critical, you know, a priority of public safety, to make sure that, you know, even if deliveries are being done, that they're done safely, and that there's quality insurance to that. And when the environmental protection of people are growing, even for the personal use, that they're not violating or impacting the environmental of water, contaminations, or pesticides, and things that may get all over to other types of activities or into the community, especially if you have illegal big girls that come a problem, and currently you don't allow, you don't have cultivation in town from a commercial activity in there. And then the neighborhood land use, both the neighborhoods, because obviously if it was all over and you allowed, you know, 99 plants, you would have a serious problem, but you've limited the number to a reasonable amount. And then of course, from a commercial standpoint, is how does it impact our other businesses? You know, if you had a strip mall, and you had a business in there, and they're sharing air conditioning with five other businesses, how does that impact them? Or if they had manufacturing in some of those, as far as the type of the equipment that goes into this, how's that impact some of the other businesses, or the fire, or safety, as far as where those are done? And the biggest obvious common one for any business is traffic congestion, right? I mean, if you don't have limited parking, and you've got a lot of volume going through something, do you have proper parking associated with the size of facility, or the type of business that comes into place? So that becomes a key thing. And then all close to all heart is a big concern is as well, access to youth. How is the youth getting access to this? And what are we doing as a community, either making sure that doesn't occur, that people aren't buying it legally, leaving it on a bedstand, kids getting access to it, or kids that are 18 years old, seniors in high school, buying it, sharing with their friends, or getting access to it? Or just illegally through all those illegal activities, because, you know, illegal people, deliveries, and businesses don't care who they sell it to, as long as they sell it. So having something in place to address those core values becomes very critical.
Quick question, you just said 18, buying it. It's 21, right?
For medicinal, no, medicinal is 18. Yeah, so if I'm an 18-year-old kid, and I have a doctor's recommendation, and I'm in high school, I can go buy it.
Right, but as you're talking about the merging of the medicinal, recreational, what happens to the 18?
Yes.
Goes to 21, I would think.
So it's 21 for adult use, right? So you're, that's correct, so if I'm a senior in high school, I'm not going to be buying it, unless I haven't been a senior for four years. And then, but if it's adult, for medicinal, they can still buy it at 18. So if I'm an 18-year-old, I'm going to get a doctor's recommendation and buy it, and so I have access to it. So there is that gap between the 18 and 21. So in looking at, you know, how you approach anything from a community, you know, we've seen some cities and cities jump and just say, let's go ahead and do this, without having some outreach and education, and think about all the unintended consequences. Education becomes very important today, is part of that, right? You're trying to get educated, you have, you have people from the community here participating in this, to get educated, to understand what that is, and that links also to the collaboration. So, you know, your businesses in your community, your school district that in there, your surrounding communities around you, that are going to be impacted, and, you know, cities that you border, and any other one of interest of collaborating with them to say, this is what we're doing, or this is not what we're doing, becomes very important in that collaboration. And that also has to do with the industry, because if you're going to look at what you're going to do in town, and what you're not going to do, it's important that you have a conversation with them, to see what's critical for them to be sustainable, or things that they have brought to you in attention on a one-on-one, or, you know, at the dais on your council meetings, all that becomes part of the collaboration processes, that's important to take all that input. Then once you do that, if you continue to do something other where you're currently at, then you legislate that based on your core values and input from the community, to make sure there's consistency upon that, so that that reflects in your regulatory ordinance, so that you've got something that everyone's comfortable with, or at least you've addressed all your major concerns. And then once the industry is in town, in this case, you have just the one here now, is that then you make sure you have good accountability and oversight in the regulation part of it, to make sure that you're showing your community that you are making sure that they are legitimate, and it takes away any concerns, you don't have any surprises down the road. So kind of starting now, and more or less, the state's already got going January 1st, and so evaluating things becomes part of a decision tree process. It's, do we stay status quo where we're at? Are we going to move on and continue evaluating different activities, because there may be some interest from you, both from an economic standpoint, or from a consumer demand standpoint? And with that said, that's where the investors are looking at opportunities to go. What cities and counties are allowing this to that and embracing this? And at what degree, both in the numbers, and where strategically it makes sense to have something in there, to look at that? And so they are looking for opportunities to move up and down the state as well, from a business standpoint. And then, once you, you look at all that, it's like, well, are we going to continue establishing where we're at with our status quo? Or are we going to continue examining this and exploring avenues for this, um, in town for, for our city, or town? So, the question always comes into place, okay, well, if we do look at something, what do we look at? Right now, you're in the medicinal world on a limited basis. Do we explore adult use? Because the question is, well, now it's legal. Uh, what's the difference between eighteen and twenty-one? Do we want to kind of make sure that, um, we're, we're doing that? Do we have businesses in this town that are going to lose, um, you know, market share to our surrounding communities because people say, "Well, I'm just going to get it to and from work, I'm going to go when I'm out of town, or I got to go do an errand, and so I'm just going to go by adult use and not do the medicinal, because I don't want to go through the hassle of getting a doctor's recommendation anymore, or getting a county card." Maybe it's a limitation on products of what they're looking at. So, what does that do for you from a, um, looking at the tree? You know, do you limit the type of activities? Do you expand a little bit of the activities? What are your comfort zone, what naturally comes because your inventory or property? You know, for your commercial, do you want to restrict it because you have limited commercial property for certain activities? Are you concerned of, um, safety or fire or combustible type of activities? We'll make some of that in the decision tree. And then, you know, where you are from a policy standpoint on both sides of that. So, these are the different activities that have occurred, and I think you've heard mostly these before, but I'm going to touch upon more of the ones that are newer or have had some interest in, in discussion with staff. Um, and the first one is a microbusiness. And so, what is a microbusiness? A microbusiness is a business that can do vertically most of the, four of these functions: cultivation, manufacturing, delivery or retailer, retail, or in distribution. In order to be a microbusiness, you have to have three of the four different functions in there. You don't have to have all four of them, but you have to have at least three of the four in, in any one of those scenarios. But the limitation you have as a cultiv, as a, as a, um, microbusiness is in the cultivation, you're limited to ten thousand square feet of canopy space. So, you hear the term, um, vertically integrated and microbusiness. And so, a microbusiness could be vertically integrated, but not all businesses, um, that are, have multiple vertical integration are microbusiness. And here's an example. What if I want to be a cultivator with twenty-five thousand square feet, right? And I want to be a manufacturer, and I want to be a retailer distributor, distribution? Well, being a microbusiness limits me to ten thousand square feet, so I can have all four touching points and be vertically integrated without being a microbusiness. So, sometimes that term is used interchangeable, so it's important you know the difference between the two of those. What's the benefits of a microbusiness? One is that it consolidates someone to doing, that's going to do all those, so they can be self-sufficient, so they don't have to rely on someone else for their product. And therefore, if I'm a retailer, my margins, I can be more competitive, because if I'm going to do all of my own, my own cultivation, um, product, and I'm doing my own manufacturing, I can provide that product to me in my retail establishment. And then, the distribution lets me move it, so I don't have to pay a margins or markup just to have someone move the product to me. And so, that's where you see people, um, looking at microbusinesses where it makes a good business sense. The difficult thing about a microbusiness is where it's tough to be good at one thing, now you got to be good at four things. And so, someone might be a good cultivator or grower, but they may be a terrible retailer and vice versa. And some of these other activities do that same thing. Um, so you've got more oversight and compliance associated with that. So, that's a microbusiness. I think you want, you still want to make a point or a comment?
Yeah, in, in some ways, I'll just be honest, you're talking a little above my pay grade, but I'm, I'm trying. And I wondered if you could explain canopy, um, I don't...
Sure.
That, and also if you could step back a little and talk about vertical integration, because I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
So, okay, and I apologize over that, that. So, the first question is canopy. So, canopy is, so this room, let's say this room is five hundred square feet, right? But these tables is where the product, the, the flowers growing, the plants are, right? This would be the canopy. And let's say this is fifty feet and that's fifty feet, so that's a hundred feet of canopy, even though you're in a five hundred square foot room. So, for the purpose of cultivation, they're only referring to the canopy space of growing. So, someone can have a fifty thousand square foot facility, but if they're only limited to a type-three permit that is allows only up to twenty-two thousand square feet of canopy, that's the maximum they can be there regardless of how big their building is. Does that make sense? Okay? Um, so, um, when we were talking about the microbusiness, by definition, they are limited to ten thousand square feet of canopy to be a microbusiness. What I was, what I was trying to explain a little bit is that if somebody wanted to have cultivation, manufacturing, retail and distribution, that if they wanted to be bigger than ten thousand square feet, they can have separate licenses for those four functions. And because I have all four, uh, all four touching points, I'm self-reliant on my own businesses, so that's vertically integrated. I don't need anyone else to, to provide any of my product or to do any touching point in order for me to be sustainable. A microbusiness does the same thing, but it has to be at a smaller scale. That's what vertical integrated means. I'm self-sustainable because I have every touching point.
And a microbusiness is only one license?
A microbusiness is only one license versus a cultivator, manufacturer, retailer, distributor, are four separate licenses. And so, there are businesses that want to be bigger than that and do not want the restriction of a microbusiness, will get four permits but are more costly, because you got to pay for four permits, than versus just one microbusiness where someone that's a smaller, that, that's sufficient with them, ten thousand square feet will grow, give them enough flower for, to their product to create oil for their manufacturing and a producer for their own business. They may, they may subsidize it with some other, uh, relationship with other growers, but basically, they want to be sustainable. Because then I can be competitive of selling a product, because I can keep my price down, because I'm not typically, um, I think I have it on the, wow, I, I think we have, we took that off, but each touching point, they mark it up. I mean, think about buying clothes, every time it's bought from, uh, the, the, the person that's manufacturing it, to the wholesaler, to the retailer, they mark it up every standing point, that's going to happen, same thing through these different touching points. And we mentioned the testing lab. A testing lab cannot have any ownership in any other activity if it's a testing lab. So, the, the second thing I want to emphasize on here as well is the, the, the term non-storefront retailer, okay? Because some people get confused with that. So, again, SB ninety-four, they created a non-storefront retailer. That means that if I have a, um, if I want to do deliveries and, and I don't want to have a storefront, or the city does not want to have any walk-in traffic, I can be in a professional building, uh, commercial building, like where there's doctors, CPAs and others, right? And I can be on the third floor and have a suite, and you can call me on the phone or you can go on and down on our website and order something, and then I download it, and we just have, you know, tables and we pull the orders and put them in our, package them, and then we go downstairs and get in our cars, and then it gets delivered to the individual. That's a non-storefront retailer, because there is no walk-in traffic at all. So, where cities or communities don't want that, that, that retailer or that kind of limited, um, retail space use, but you saw all those retail, you saw all those deliveries in town, right? So, you say, "Well, obviously, there's a consumer demand here. Do we want to consider allowing a non-storefront retailer? Or, you know, can our, our existing, uh, dispensary retailer now meet that demand in order to do that?" And the answer may be yes or no. I don't know. So, that's what a non-storefront retailer does. It gives you options if you don't want walk-in traffic. Okay? So, um, any questions on the activities? Because I didn't go over all of them in detail, but more happy to while we're here.
So, um, I was downloading some stuff off the Cal cannabis portal, because one of the things that's been confusing to me is the definition of distributor. And so, based on what I'm seeing on theirs, I kind of understand what that is. But what I don't understand is, and to me, that has to do with trans, either distributor transport between cultivators, manufacturers and distributors, or distributors who arrange for transporting cannabis goods, arranging for testing or conducting quality assurance review. So, is a regular distributor also a deliverer? I'm not sure.
Sure, that's a good question. That's a good question. No, that's a good question, and it comes up quite often, because when you talk about distributor, someone thinks that is. So, you hit part of it on a note. So, the, the goal of a distributor is to move the product from one licensee to another at wholesale, okay? So, they do not sell to an end user. So, they have three primary goals. One, move the product from one, one business to the other, but not sell it to the consumer. They collect the excise tax, because that's the central point, so not, the cultivator doesn't pay the tax, or the manufacturer doesn't pay the tax straight, strict, straight to the state, they pay it to the distributor, who then pays the tax for everyone. The third thing that it does, the third thing that it does is it, it's responsible to make sure the product is tested before it goes to market. So, that's its three key functions.
Okay, so that part I got. What I don't understand is, um, is what is a delivery license? Is that just a non-storefront?
Non-storefront.
So, non-storefront could be, if we wanted to use interchangeable terms that made sense to most of us, it would be delivery?
Delivery, yes.
Got it, thank you.
That's why we have it, the way I have it there, here, has delivery slash non-storefront retailer. So, it means one and the same, but just like in law, there's no such word as marijuana, but people tend to call it that, it's all cannabis. But in this case, people tend to use the slang delivery. It's non-storefront by law. And so, I'm just trying to show you the link to that, because some people don't understand what that is, and that's why, so hopefully that was more clear to you. Okay?
David, since this question, this question came up already, excuse me.
Okay.
If you could just once more explain the, the microbusiness aspect and how it excludes, you know, it's any of those, but excludes the testing labs.
Yes, so again, the microbusiness has the four elements that could be considered as a microbusiness, is a cultivation, manufacturing, retail, storefront or non-storefront, and distribution. A microbusiness cannot be a testing lab. And the other thing that a microbusiness is limited to is on the manufacturing, it can only be non-volatile, um, manufacturing, cannot be volatile manufacturing, um, in that process as well. Okay?
So, you said distributors are responsible for getting it tested?
Distributors is responsible to make sure it is tested, not actually doing the testing. So, he has to take samples and have it taken to the testing lab. That's the three, the three primary priorities of a test, of a distribution, is move the product to one licensee to another, collect the excise tax and make sure that the product is tested. Once the test comes back, so he sits and they, they sit and hold it. When the test comes back showing that the product has not contaminated, then he can move it to market. If it comes back, it's contaminated, then it doesn't move forward in that whole batch. Basically, has to be re-examined or looked at, and it can be tested a second time.
Can we field any questions, like, how do you use a sample? Where contaminated the issue, please? Just on my call.
So, there's variations of it, it's a requirement of the testing, the requirements at the state level. It could do mold or mildew, it could be that it has residual metals inside of it, it depends on the level of the test that, that is done at it, um, that the testing lab and the state has a requirement, a criteria for that. But it's really about the quality of the product and make sure that it meets a certain degree requirement of state law, and there's a whole checklist of things that are listed for that. No, there's a variety, again, there's like, there's like about twelve different lists of that. Yes, this flags, product could be tampered for a variety of things. It could be just pesticides that are used even for rodents. Again, there's a variety of things, there's a checklist, things that they go through through the testing exam for that.
Hold on, hold on one sec. Do, do people have any, just clarifying questions as to what's been presented so far? Just to show hands, people who have questions so far. Okay, um, yeah, we could just take this real quickly.
Okay.
So, the distributor, could he pick the lab? Did he take it?
Um, yes, he could, he could, you know, especially strategically where they're located, they can have a relationship that they can partner with, they just can't have any ownership in that lab at all. Um, and then, the state will randomly even check that to make sure there's some integrity in there as far as who that are, and maybe may alternate them if they get some concerns regarding that. But logistically, right now, that's one of the choke points, is there's not enough testing labs. So, if there's like one in the county, then someone may be, you know, strategically, it makes sense to do business with them until there's more and more of the competition to provide more alternative, and then the pricing will get more competitive.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Ben made a good point. If we plan to create a frequently asked question, it'd probably be good if people wrote down the questions before asking it, because these might be questions other people might want answers to. But we'd have to watch the video then to figure out what the questions are, it'd be easier if people could write them down on the cards.
Yeah, if people could write down your questions, um, that's a great amount of good. I'll take this, uh, three or four questions from people right there.
Okay.
And David, if you could just very briefly recite your question, because people are watching this online.
Yes, I will, I will do that. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir.
Actually, if we could have someone else have a question. Does anyone else have a question? Then we can get back to yours maybe later. Go ahead.
This is a quick, um, as many people here might know, the natural products are consistent standards that are so, uh, synergistic to what we're dealing with right now, that I don't think that, uh, especially in stores, to testing labs and so forth, um, I think there's a lot of work still to be done and maybe not sure that whatever it is that you standard and you need to be tested, I think is a big empty box right now. There isn't a lot of work that's to be done to actually have certified, and certified what standard? And so, I've had thirty years of being in the natural products.
So, just interrupt, because we just want to have questions at this point, comments we, we can take later on, but just clarifying questions so we can get through the, the presentation.
Yes, this is, is only one testing lab right now? We also, I imagine, you're going to have more testing labs? And how do they get certified to test?
Sure, so, um, if you go on the, the, the State's Health Department, there's a requirement by law with that, they have to be ISO certified, not only their equipment, but they have to do as well. It's very difficult to get that, it's not a low entry point for anyone. The machines alone are seven hundred thousand dollars on average to do that, um, and they have to go through this certification on there. If you go to the, again, the state's website, they have the requirements in order to be a testing lab. That is one of the reasons why we have kind of a choke point on there, because everything has to be tested and there's not enough testing labs. Just to clarify, when I use it to comment about the one testing lab in the county, I use it as an example that someone's not, if they're limited, they may be forced to not have multiple options to use different people, because there are limited testing labs throughout the state. Right now, I believe there's only sixteen to twenty-two of them throughout the state.
Yeah, David, I have a couple written questions. Uh, the first is, would a mobile testing truck be allowed?
No, it has to be at a fixed location. Must be at a fixed location.
What else, other questions?
And...
Please, don't, don't interrupt, let, let, go ahead, Ben.
How big of a batch is necessary for testing?
Um, the minimum, the maximum you can do as a batch is fifty pounds. Oops, did I just kill it? Oh, there we go.
And, and real quickly, would a storefront, or would a non-storefront retailer be prohibited from converting to a traditional storefront retailer?
That's a land use question, policy, um, you know, whatever it is, just like you grandfather someone in to do something or allow them to expand on it, that's a policy decision when you get to a point of considering that, um, that's allowed to do that or not.
Wait a minute, if, if somebody had a non-storefront and they wanted to convert to a storefront, they would have to also apply to the state to get a different license? And then, the question would come to us if we would be okay with that. But they do have to get a different license from the state.
So, I got, and I, I apologize, I got focused tunnel vision on answering it from a policy standpoint to say that it is, but the question, the answer which you said is correct, that first, the local level has to allow it to, to be permitted, and then, if they are, they could do both, because right now, for example, your storefront right now, if you allowed them to do deliveries, they can do both, but they don't need to have a second license. The permit is for a retailer, and it's only restricted to what you tell it of it. If you say it can only do retail and no deliveries, that's all it is. If you say it can be non-storefront but no retail, it's still a retailer. But if you allow them to do both, then it's one permit.
Okay, but let's go back, because I think you might be confusing the issue. From what I under- From what I understand, it's a different type of license from the state, so they would also have to get a license from the state. If their first license was for non-storefront, and they wanted to convert to storefront as well, wouldn't they also have to obtain a state license for that?
Yes, the answer is yes, or a type nine to a type 10A, then they would, they would require to convert to it.
Okay, in addition to our requirements, okay, thank you.
Local license, yes, yep, okay. Do we get, we got, now on the same page of it now, we got it answered?
Yeah, I actually have one that I could probably help answer too. Would a store, a delivery business need to be in a properly zoned address? Yes, it would be considered a commercial business, and that would be among the things that if a jurisdiction wished to allow different types of uses, for example, delivery, they would need to go through the appropriate zoning.
There's your answer.
So they wouldn't end up in some business office? So, yeah, what?
Okay. Ben mentioned it, yes, they had a commercial location, properly zoned for that, you can talk to him afterwards or at the end. Okay, um, we got off here, oh, we were here. So, um, since there's already been policy discussion on that, and it's about the do's and don'ts, this is really what the, what the town allows you, and the council's already had discussion on, they've already currently said eliminated these from the discussion, so we won't have much conversation on them other than what we did to that. The town has narrowed cannabis discussion to looking at this, we talked about these activities, expanded on the micro-business, the one we didn't talk about is a cannabis temporary event, so if there's any events that are occurring on this, the city has still control if they're going to permit that or not. If you have an event that they're going to do it, typically, that you, there's a variation of that. One, they have to have follow state law, and state law has a special permit requirement for cannabis permits, and they have to follow that in order to be required to do that. But even if they got one at the state, even though it's once a year event, or, you know, once a quarter or that, they still have to get permission from you and a permit at the local level in order to have that temporary events permit, just like any other event or that may be in here.
So, real quick on the temporary events, does that mean some permit different from like a special event permit specifically for this type of event? Or you just mean the regular permits we would do if someone wanted to do a, say, an event in one of our facilities?
Um, it's one of the both. One is, um, you know, throughout the state, there's a lot of, like the Emerald Cups up here, right? They have that, in the past, they were allowed, they were just doing that. Now they have to have a special event, not only from the state, but they also have to make sure that they're authorized to do certain activities, even if they're going to have product at the event itself. It has to be a, an approved event for that activity. And in there, you know, there's insurance and other things that you require, and public safety as far as dealing with traffic, and even having police or fire there as part of the event as well. And so there's a checklist of things that's required that they have online for specifically for that. So, the categories of use. Oh, another question?
More, more questions, and Peter?
If you think they're pertinent, yeah.
Um, in terms of regulating taxing marijuana, just if you could expand a little bit on the regulation, and in terms of business licenses, in terms of marijuana potency, pesticide, and health testing, if, if testing occurs in those regards?
Um, testing occurs on everything in a regulator world now, for the exception of this here, so let me backtrack. When we, when the temporary, when the emergency regs came out, what it said is for the first six months, that product that is bought before January 1st does not have to be tested. But if you sell the product that you bought before January 1st, and we have a lot of dispensaries that load it up, so they have a lot of product, one, they were concerned that they may not be able to buy it afterwards, because there's no one permitted, and two, that they knew that they didn't have to be tested, and so, there, there didn't have to go through that. They had to have, there's a language that says this product has not been tested and does not meet the standard requirements of the testing, and they notify the consumer of that, that it was purchased prior to that. However, now that this last week occurred, where that was supposed to grandfather and die, you know, July 1st, now they've extended it for a whole nother year, so it means they're still allowed to expand that for the first year that they're in business.
So is it a whole year, or is it through January 1st?
It's now a whole, well, January of, of 2018 to January 2019, that's what's a whole year.
That makes a difference, if it's a whole year, then we're talking about into next calendar year, but it just goes to January 1st.
All of 2018, all of 2018.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And David, in terms of the special, or the cannabis temporary events, do you know if there's applicable secondhand smoke laws that apply to that?
Um, and that's the local jurisdiction where, you know, if they have that in place, whatever your local ordinance has to do with tobacco, tobacco products, it could be the similar with that too. So, if you have events where they're selling, you know, alcohol or food, and you still restrict them as far as where you have tobacco, you can put those terms and conditions on this too. In fact, there's, there's events that limit to areas even of where people can consume at these areas as well for these events. Okay, and so we went to the, the categories in here, and so, you know, one of the things that I think's important to keep in mind is that the businesses, and you've got the, the one that's here. When we were having conversations three or four years ago about businesses and the communities having it and allowing it to come into town, is that it was clearly everyone was medicinal, it wasn't such a business decision, it's like, okay, we're okay with this. But as we move forward, and the business models are shifting, what you're finding is you have a consumer, because of Prop 64, and you have the millennials and the centennials now that are getting access to the adult side, that what we saw happen in Colorado, Washington, and Oregon, that the product and the consumer is moving to the adult use side. So, in those states, it's getting as high as 60% as a consumer's adult use. So what does that mean? In California, we're seeing this up and down the state, where the businesses are saying, I'm not going to survive as a business if I only have medicinal. Because of half their business now that were moved this far around is going to do adult use, they're going to buy it, and therefore, the, the smaller communities that we've seen is saying, I've lost half my business because people can go get adult use now, and they don't come, they don't come and get medicinal anymore. So, that's important to know, that if you make a decision to move forward with other types of activities, that the business model really is going to be reflective there, because we just had a conversation last night in Concord, where the businesses were saying is that if you're just going to limit the medicinal, no one's going to come in town. Of course, they're starting from scratch, you've had a, a traditional place here that's been a little more, been here for a while. But we're seeing that in Berkeley, we're seeing this in LA, we're seeing other communities transforming over that, because they, one, got into it partly because of the money, and they don't want to lose their market share or their revenues, because they're seeing that occurring today. You're in a position right now that you don't have the other activities occurring, but I strongly encourage you to think about it. If you make that decision, make it based that you're comfortable with adult use, not medicinal only, because those business models are going to have impacts of them down the road, even though it's your, your decision tree now is doing that. And most council members in other cities that came before you and allowed it, were coming in with that standpoint, but are looking at it now, they're like, okay, well, now it's going to be, you know, mainstream, and the businesses are telling me they're going to struggle. And, uh, that's what's happening up and down the state as far as in that model. Um, and so we talked about these, you're already right now only in the medicinal world, and you have some activities that you've already made a decision on, and we've kind of already talked about them, so we'll move on to there. Addressing public concerns, and so, in a more detailed standpoint of it, of looking at the concerns, like I said, in the, in the quote that we said, is a policy decision made today will impact of what it looks like tomorrow. And so the personal use is where that becomes in there. Um, you have an ordinance in place of what the number activity is, and I don't know without, yet, if you restrict, if you have guidelines on what is allowed and not allowed, right? Do you clearly say that you can't have any extractions of any type of oil done, you know, in, in the, in the personal home? Um, do you restrict that it can't be in apartments that someone else is sharing a common wall with? Um, do you have restrictions on the, on the maximum wattage that someone can use if they happen to grow it indoors? Because if the average home carries 3,500 watts, and someone's using 2,400 just to light up 18 plants indoors, what does that do from a fire code concerns, or a public, public, if someone's doing that as an impact to that from a public safety? If a police officer goes a call for service on a noise call, and he's standing at the door, and he sees a two-year-old crawling on the floor with a pacifier and a wet ground in the living room, and there's pesticides and, and plants there, do you restrict that it can't be in a common place of a kitchen, bathrooms, and places where kids commonly are? Do you have some kind of welfare or safety code, some elements built in to address those concerns associated of where the activity is? If it's outdoors, do you restrict that it has to be, you know, in a controlled environment or not, or restrict, you know, a 10-foot setback from someone's property, so that they're not right on top of them smelling the odors of an outdoor plant? So those are kind of the things you just think about, and, and some, sometimes, I try to encourage communities that don't have to go out there and be the Gestapo about this, but have some mindful things that you're giving some kind of guidance on there, so that there are some, some kind of control mechanisms from a liability standpoint, or concerns of, of neighborhoods that have something in place. Um, and you know, just react to, to more on complaint driven, and try to be, you know, proactive on enforcement on something that's not necessarily an issue yet, until it becomes one. So that's the thing on the personal use, and then the last one, of course, is, you know, if people don't own the property, do you at least require that it has to be consent of the property owner, where 40% of the, the property is not owned by the people that are in the dwelling to begin with? And maybe the owner doesn't even know that they're doing in that, so that is just a few checklist things if you're to keep in mind as you consider discussions in the future with personal use. So the other public concerns, has to do with regulated, and, you know, what the risk assessment of public safety issues, of, you know, businesses that you do have. And again, you only have the one, so it's not as big of an issue. But, by having good oversight to the businesses, not only that I've learned of dealing with multiple businesses, one, you want to keep the feds out of your backyard, but secondly, you want to have that confidence of your community that you're taking appropriate measures of just making sure that things don't get too far out of there. But as you have more discussion of, of policy discussion, maybe expanding businesses in there, then talk to those core services that we talked about. How do you incorporate things that you can have oversight in those core services, issues to make sure that you've got coverage on, on backgrounds, you know, being able to look at what they're doing legally, so they're not diverting product, or illegal products being sold, and the consumer quality insurance issues aren't become an issue. And then on things on the right here, is, is, you know, part of it is you're trying to discourage black market, so, why you want some things, like we talked about, the deliveries coming into town, how do you eliminate that if that's a concern or an issue from that? Well, you know, looking at non-storefront, or looking at other options to address that, so that you can mitigate that if there's an issue with that. More public concerns, you know, on the, on the one we talked about, get rid of the bad actors, you know, again, not making sure that the youth are exposed to gross sites in residential. We talked about the two-year-old crawling on the pacifier, or even the people are leaving on the night stands, you know, are you encouraging or educating people about, making sure if you're buying product, it's just not being left it out for people to get access to? Just like we have concerns about guns, kind of the same concept about safety insurance, and nothing happens to anybody. Um, and then, and you know, how do you have stuff set up for complaints regarding illegal activities for code enforcement? And then reminding people that, you know, just like alcohol, be responsible when you're doing this. Um, if in your case you have dispensary, are they providing a flyer, or educating people, or advising them about, you know, drinking impaired, or being under, under the influence, is still like drinking, drinking as well as being impaired? And so, you know, you want, you don't want issues to occur with that of educating them about that. And then, you know, again, not underestimating and open outdoors, is the air quality and pollutions of pesticides and activities that may come in there? And then, you know, calls to service because of fatal accidents in town, or people overdosing responses about just, again, educating people about the public health concerns, that they are addressing these things if they're going to have products at home. But if you do do something, you know, again, putting a robust process in place, we talked about having stuff at the state level. The state level is the low bar, that's the, the minimum things you have in there. You can have more things associated with that, to make sure you have comforts in the businesses. We regulate in California 1,200 businesses, that we go in and do inspections and compliance, we do background investigations on businesses and employees, just to do due diligence, because there's comfort zone. So there's a degree of things, depending on what level you want to have that oversight, that you just have those in place, just as you will the land use, you will want the, the regulatory stuff to be in here. Um, and this is just a list of more things that a regulatory ordinance can have in there. And I think one of the biggest ones, especially in a smaller community, is a good neighbor policy, you know, when there's complaints, how do you, how do you address that? You don't want to be handling these things all day long of complaints to do that, and, you know, you guys have done a good job with the one, the one business you've had in town over the years, and, and I think that's a good example of how a good business and a good partnership of that neighboring thing gets taken care of. From the planning side, you know, consolidating this, you're a smaller town, so it's easier to consolidate when you don't have multiple offices involved in the whole process. But, you know, streamlining, one of the big things that we hear from the industry is that it takes too long to get through a process. You know, we've seen some that take two or three years to get through it, and some go as fast as 120 days. Land use, depending how you approach it in the land use zoning requirements, and requirements they have to do, because it's very strenuous for any business, even if it's a restaurant, you know, that's coming into town, there's requirements to have to do that, and this is new to them. So one, they're now going from an extreme of being the feral cat, to now having to, you know, being able to sit on someone's lap. It's just, doesn't happen that easy, and they, and their patient gets a little, a little different, but they're, they're getting better and better as time evolves. If you decide to expand the businesses in town, you know, you're very limited on what you can have, and so the important thing really is, is a quality control, right? You're not going to, you're not a community that's going to open the doors and have tons of businesses in town, you're going to be very limited. But then again, who's going to come into town, and who do you want to come into town? And it's not necessarily the big box business with all the money, it's really the business that really fits your community, because that's important, you know? How they brand themselves, you know, how they hire people, when we talked with Colfax and Placerville, and even Mammoth Lakes, it's really about that business that kind of blends in and be part of your community, and, and you've had relationships with them, that when you do an application processes, that you're having a lot of things to consideration in that application process. It's not the first person in the door, or the person with the biggest wallet that you look at as you take that in consideration, but a good merit process that takes all those things into consideration. So this is just kind of a hypothetical timeline here, because of where we're at, you know, if you're looking at, you're still kind of educating a little bit, you're still talking to the community about things. But if you, you look at things, it says, well, if we did something, what's on that checklist of things that we want to do for a regulatory framework? Goes back to those core services, those four activities, it goes back to some of the samples we talked about, of what you would look like in a regulatory permit above and beyond where you're at, and even your current one, is it up to date where we've done that? Most ordinances that are more than 90 days are already outdated because of all the changing parts that go, associate with that. And then the big part of it, just like anything, it takes a lot of resources from your staff and from you, in order to do that, whatever process you do, make sure that you have a cost recovery plan in place to make you whole, and that you have the proper resources internally, or, you know, contracting for stuff. We've got some communities, they got one planner, and they go, they're full, their plate's full, so they sometimes need a contract with a planner to help assist this, because then that, that person's full-time job to deal with that. Did I pitch that right, Ben? I think I did, right? Um, in other, in other departments or other activities too, becomes very critical. So that's kind of the first step of looking at the things that you would look at. Then the second part is, you know, do you do the hearings? If you're going to change your land use zoning ordinance, obviously you got the hearing requirements to do that, you know, the SEQA requirements, if there are going to be any drastic changes to any existing businesses or, or land use activities, and then approving the adoptions and make sure that, you know, you can do all the protocol of, of requirements that your attorney's going to make sure you do for cost recovery fees, and/or if you're going to ban something, or even establishing a procedure, so then you've got that put in documents for clarity and transparency. Um, at this case, we're not going to talk into the deep about the, you know, the taxing policy of it, but we of it, but we are coming up to a November, I have the November on there. It's not an urgency since where you're at on this. What some cities are recently doing now because they have a transaction tax or they got other tax, they don't want to confuse the voters with too much, is that they're doing community benefits or impact fees for the business because it's going to still take you 12 to 18 months to get anyone in the door, even if you consider doing that. And then kick it out to, you know, elections at a different date in 2020. You know, it's not that far away, it'll be here faster than you do if you even get someone up and operating. But if you do choose to at least get something on there, you're running up into a timeframe where you have to get it to the county by August 10th. So I don't know if you have a dark month or whatever, you would have to do something sooner than that to move with it. And then tax and fees, you know, there's money, the industry does see this, but it's not as much money as people think it is, you know? In a regulator world and now with the saturator world, where we saw margins of 35, 40% in this industry, in 18 months to three years, it's going to be down to 20% and in some cases, it could be down to 10 to 15%. So it's not as, you know, the golden goose is not as big as people think it is and we're starting to realize a lot, and we'll talk about that at the end of why that's occurring. And then the misconception of sales and use tax. People think that, oh, because it's medicinal, which is what you have now, that means it's not subject to sales tax. It's only not subject to it if they have the county card, which is listed on there, the H and S card. There are less than 1% of the people, there was, there's less than, in November of 2016, there were 6,800 statewide that had that card. Today, there's less than 3,000 statewide. And in your county, there's probably less than 150. There's not a lot to do that. So I would say nine out of 10 purchases are going to be paying the sales tax and should be attributed to you on the current environment. And the Department of Tax and Fees has got on their thing that they sent emails out to the retailers advising them of the requirements for this, if you have not.
So just a question. And people have the normal medical marijuana cards. How do they get this health and safety code card that gives them the tax exemption? Do they have to file additional forms or something?
Yes, they have to go to the county. The county's charging roughly about $100 to get that card. And then you, you know, they'll have, you'll be in their database for that and you still have to do the doctor's recommendation and you have to do that each year. So because it kind of becomes a kind of a cumbersome thing at this point, most people tend not to do that. And the reason they were doing it more was a deferment of offense so they wouldn't get arrested if they had more than eight ounces and be prior to that. So people typically now aren't getting the cards anymore for that purpose.
And you said there were probably only about 150 in your county?
In your county, yeah. It was about 3,300, I think statewide now.
And I did check with the county and if people are low income, they can be eligible for a waiver or a reduction of that fee through the county. So they do make allowances for low-income individuals.
That's good to know, yeah. It's a good thing that they're doing that too, to consider that. That's wonderful. So, you know, you hear from both the industry and the consumers, you're going to tax us to death, you're going to tax us to death. And, you know, before Prop 64, industry is like, tax me, I don't care, because they didn't have the Prop 64 taxes in place. January comes along, all of a sudden the state taxes them 25%. And so when the locals try to do something at, you know, 10%, seems to be the high, the higher amounts in there, but typically they're in the five to six range, but for those that are doing it as high as 10%, all of a sudden now you've got a 30, 35% tax. When you look at Colorado, Washington, Oregon, when they were up in those things, then what people say is that I'm just going to continue buying from the black market because I'm not going to pay these costs because it just yacks the price up a lot. That also now is changing of why the industry is impacted about their margins because their profitability is not there, not only saturated amount, but because of the taxes in there. And so in your case, looking at the top right are options for you, you know, if you consider looking even at a local tax, is that typically for the retail side, it's going to be based on gross receipts. What we're seeing throughout the state in general, for cultivation, it's done on a square foot tax on their, per square feet. And what we're seeing more happening on that is the rates are coming down significantly. For June and November, I drafted 25 tax measures and they all have no higher than 6%. Where typically and before that, you've seen some as high as 15% on the books, even though those are unrealistic and as you look at the models, it's not sustainable. And we just finished Monterey County that's got 150 businesses where our tax measures, when there was only 20 cities and counties in California, they had 10% for all categories and $15 to $25 per square foot. We are dropping everything to under 4% and cultivation is $4 a square foot. That's how much the market is saturated and to make sure that the business becomes sustainable, they're looking at different things and taxes and fees is one thing that is very sensitive to them, but also sustainable. You got to make sure they keep that in mind. On the bottom here, the Prop 26, that's the fee we talked about, not only the initial application fee, but if you wanted to go ongoing to have annual regulatory fees, costs for staff for anything, planning, you know, any modifications, the police department or sheriff that's involved with it, the finance department that's collecting the fees or taxes, everyone's got a little touching point that to make you whole, that's where the Prop 26 fee comes into place, that you can evaluate to see at what degree you want to have oversight to manage the industry in your town. So we've talked about the standard fee, you know, the fees already, kind of the thing to make yourself whole. On the right, just quickly, you know, typically the taxes are general taxes, 50 plus one. There's been three cities that tried to do a special tax and all three of them failed because remember it takes 66 and two-thirds. It's a very difficult, but then you have to earmark it specifically for something. Now, one thing that I want to share with you, even if you're not even looking at taxes, in November, the likelihood is that there's a called the Fair Accountability Act that's coming out. And I don't know if you've had a chance to share with that at all, Garrett. But if that comes out, it's not only affecting consideration of this, it's going to affect you on any future tax because it's going to require a two-thirds vote of the voters and it's going to require four-fifths of the council. Both of those are trigger marks, not one or the other, it's both of those if that passes. So that could have some other impacts to your concerns regarding other activities to keep in mind a concern of that. However, the beauty is, is that even if you did a general tax, it doesn't mean that you have to announce it as a special tax because it automatically triggers that it has to meet that threshold. It has nothing to do with calling it a general special tax. If the Fairness Act tax passes, it just requires to have 66 and a two-thirds vote. So if you had a 70% that supported it, you would meet that threshold and the US Council would just have to be the four-fifth trigger approving it or adoption of that, if you consider that. So this is what we call the cumulative cannabis, the tax rate that we talked about. So we talked about the touching points, right? So if you look at the bottom and if you have your copy on, it's probably easier to read, where it shows 29.45%. So what we found in those other states and alcohol is the same way, that's the, back to our vertical discussion, you can see where the vertically of all the touching points, that's the cumulative tax of 29.45%. So the very top one is when we say producer, that's the cultivator. So what we've done for this model is that we've converted a square foot tax of $10 a square foot, equivalent of 2.5% in the local tax on the top line. And then they mark it up as the manufacturer when they move the product. And then if you tax it out 4% on them and then they mark it up and move it to the distributor and you tax it at 3% and then you get it to the retailer and you tax it out 4% and then you've got the local sales tax, the excise tax from the state that's, those combined with the top cultivation tax of 25% in your cumulative tax, that's the cumulative of 30%. And the goal is to keep it under 30%. Where we've seen in the other states where it's gotten to 34, 35 to 37%, that's where it pushes people to the black market, which means two things, the product isn't being sold in the regulator world, but also it impacts your bottom line of the taxes. And so where city says, oh, we're just going to tax every activity at 10%, we don't care. Well, that's a 50% tax on top of the state tax. That's where you hear where it's 45 to 75% on taxes because people are staying in silos when they do their taxes, not looking at the cumulative impact. And you can see $1,000 a pound product is being taxed at almost $440 by the time it goes to the consumer, right? So those are constituents in your community that end up feeling that burden as well, not only the businesses.
How are you determining that it's at 30% that you drive people to the black market?
That is, the four states that have come back, those lessons learned from them.
30%.
30%. And that's also the same model that alcohol uses. Alcohol stays somewhere in that range. The 30%, alcohol, the alcohol model follows that same thing. And so where it kind of gets to that extreme, that's where, that's the pain point really where, you know, I kind of call it like the Uber in the Airbnbs, right? So where do you go to the hotel versus use Airbnb? Where do you use Uber versus the taxi? It's that pain point of people's willingness to pay or where it causes them to move in a different direction. That's what we've seen in our experience of what other states have done, but we've also seen it here in California.
Is that across all demographics?
Yes. We've seen it in LA, we've seen it in the small towns, we've seen it in big towns, north, south.
Income disparity?
Yep, yep.
So you're thinking, it's just hard for me to understand how if you're waiting to 30 to get folks that are then, you know, going to go back to the black market, but you're dealing with low-income people, 30 is pretty high.
Yes, and again, remember it's all the different touching points that, what this is trying to do is your decision tree of the different activities of what rate you tax them will have unintended consequences of that. It's going to be automatically is, what the disparity is for a low-income person is the quality and level of a product, right? I'm not going to buy, I'm going to maybe spend $50 on a product versus $400 on a product. And so you're just going to, you know, choose, do you go to Chipotle or you go to McDonald's because of your, you know, disparity of your income and even higher than that. But people will make decisions as far as where they are based on what kind of products they're capable of buying and what degree of quality and levels that they will buy determine some of that as well.
So David, under your model, if a town only had a retailer didn't allow cultivation, manufacture, distribution, our little add point at the end, while the retailer might have to pay all those prices, we really wouldn't know what they were paying when we create our tax to know if we're at that 30% threshold or not.
Right, and so this is more important as a whole if you're going to start looking at allowing other types of businesses in town. On the retailer, because the retailer has the golden ticket because there's not as many in the state, right? And in your guys' case, even regionally, there's not that many here. So there's a little more leverage on them to be able to absorb a little bit of a tax and that's the high point. So we say for retail, initial rates are 4% not to exceed 6%. Going to a 6%, people aren't going to go to other retailers because there's no one close to you at this point. However, that's where we see all the deliveries that they could take advantage or I continue buying in the black market. So that does have its impact on there because then their margins are less unless they've got a good relationship and they're buying product fairly cheap. So even when if they mark it up, they can still be competitive against those other deliveries that may be legal or illegal because people say, well, I can buy it, they're legal, I don't need to go to that because the price is competitive on that. However, if you were going to have every type of business in town and start taxing it, you have to look at, for example, a wholesaler, a grower, right? We have right now 3,200 growers in the state on a temporary permit. They're anticipating 10,000. So those growers have to compete with that price dropping significantly because they don't have leverage. Because if I'm a retailer and say, I can buy your product for 500 different businesses to do the same thing, why should I pay a premium for yours, right? So your cultivators need to be competitive, not only in the tax, but everything else that you require them. Same with your manufacturers. There's only, there's going to be about 8,500 manufacturers shooting to have 40 shelf space in a retail establishment on average. So think about it, 8,500 competing for 40 spots in a retail spot, very competitive and different products. So they're all challenged with that. Your retailer doesn't have that because they can select from wherever those are because there's, you know, there's not that many around them. But again, they have to be concerned of losing their market share to delivery services that have more flexibility. It's like the hot dog stand in front of the five-star restaurant that's paying 25 grand for rent where the other person's not paying anything, they're still have that same competition. That's what happens here on the retail side as well. So what we've done, just quickly, is just kind of used some of the various examples, call my Noah's Ark, just kind of two of everything, just for discussion purposes. Obviously you don't have this occurring or saying that you're going to do this, but just kind of give you a range of if you had different tax rates at low rates to medium to aggressive. We typically will break different categories at lower rates. As you saw on the chart, we showed you the higher range of the rates, but, you know, testing labs sometimes are 1% to 2%, manufacturers are 4% and cultivators are 2.5, roughly 1.5 to 2.5% just because of the volume and distributors typically are 2.5 to 4%. But for averaging out for just for, you know, for illustration purposes, I just gave you a model to look at of what could occur potentially based on some assumptions on this. Now, that doesn't mean they're reflective of the assumptions on their, on the dollar amounts, but on an average, those are probably in the range, even if you went down about a half a million on each one of those average gross receipts based on where you are regionally. And the market's slowly getting a little more saturated in there. But regionally, it's still competitive.
A question, if you could just go back for a sec. So when you say assumes two retailers with an average of 2.5 million in gross receipts, is that each?
Yes, that's on each. And again, this was just more illustration purposes.
No, I get that. I just wanted to know what your assumptions were based on. So if you only had one retailer who maybe gross receipts is half a million and I don't know what it is, way down. I mean, your estimates are showing a big city that has a lot of...
This is an average, this would be an average city between 70, 80,000 population, but it's more regionally located, right? Your retailers don't have the population consumer demand that's going to pull everyone. However, I will tell you that Cotati's retailer, where they're at, is one of the top 25 in the state and they do very well, right? So it's not all about that, it's part branding and part of the strategic and what their business model are that could be very successful in that and the numbers are significantly higher than that. And so they're going to, Cotati or Cloverdale, same similar in size and regional type, you know, as far as makeup, has the same element. But then if you go on the other side in the SAC region where you have Colfax and Placerville, you know, they're in the 500,000 to a million dollar range. And so you could end up in that range as well, depending on multiple things that make up that branding and the business model.
So David, I'm sorry. These really successful large operations you're talking about in Cotati, how much are they bringing in a year in sales?
So I can't tell you that, but I would say it's, again, to be, when I say the top 25, the top 25 are generating between eight and 20 million dollars a year. And I just told you Cotati is in the top 25 in the state. And they only have a 650 square foot facility and they have about 800 patients a day come through their facility.
Do you have a sense of what the sort of middle percentile is?
So the, yeah, so this 2.5 million is based on 2,000 customers per month. Unique customers, not the same person coming every day. Yeah. So I've been saying, there's different models that reflect, I mean, you could be, you could be the Colfax Placerville range or you could be Cotati. And I'd say it's not all based on size or where that because you can see where they're very successful and they just don't have, you know, they're not a big population of where they're at, what they pull from. So what makes it is very interesting of how that occurs.
So question from a government perspective, how do the towns actually collect that revenue? Is it like still because they can't do banking? Is it all cash or is there a mechanism by which towns actually collect the funding?
Yeah, so there are banking options, not only for the city, but for the industry folks on different... folks, on different things. We have in Sonoma-Mendocino County, there are three or four now banks and credit unions that are working with both sides. So where you had limitations before, there's a little more openness to that. There's discussions that most of the industry folks have NDAs with the credit unions or banks, so they can't discuss, disclose that stuff. On the government side, we could talk about if you're ever getting a position of that where you have restrictions of things that can't be really talked in public, but you do have options for you. There are other options that are looking at where someone's, you know, on our government client tile says, hey, we've got twenty people, businesses in town, but we don't want this money coming to our small little town, you know, we got one cashier working things and we're concerned of just people bringing it down. We have up and down the state now where there's industry armored cars that will pick up the money and take the money straight to your bank and/or to, in your case, would be the San Francisco Reserve that does that for the government side. So there are options out there to consider for both sides of that.
I have a question. Is it possible to see if it's on map and break down by all kinds of potential tax projections?
Again, this is just a kind of showing a general thing. It's going to, if we try to specialize it to uniqueness of assumptions, we don't know the assumptions of, because again, council has taken policy direction not to do certain things, and, you know, again, is adult-use medicinal, and then in the variations of what that would do, could change a lot of the models. We're just using it as...
You're making a lot of assumptions and grouping together to get accurate, we look at, we have to look at like...
Yeah, you could, well, again, you could do that. Just for illustrative discussions, yeah. At a higher level scenario, again, it could vary on that.
So maybe we could finish the presentation, then entertain some questions. We're almost done.
Yes, we are.
Just want to make sure you get everything, your remarks.
So with that said, back to why the cumulative chart becomes very critical and what's kind of happening out there as we talk about black market. The consumer demand amount statewide is two-point-five million pounds. But from a legal market, what's being consumed is one-point-six. So the delta even from what the consumer is and what is being sold, you can see there's a gap there that needs to be closed through regulations and enforcement of the black market. And being in a world where people will go to the black market, needs to shove that, I mean, shorten that up so everyone, all that two-point-five million pounds is being bought in a regular market. The problem that we have is twofold right now, why the price is dropping. Just in the temporary permits as of April, there are thirty-two-hundred cultivators in California that are going to produce five-point-five to six-point-nine million pounds. That's three times to four times more than the consumer demand in California. So you go, well, then what's the problem? That is why we talk about, that price I showed you, the cultivation at a thousand dollars a pound. In 2016, when we did ballot measures, the price per pound for indoor cultivation, which I'm referring to, was two thousand dollars a pound. Today's market averages about fifteen-forty a pound. And in eighteen months, with this starting to occur in a regular market, that's why we show that a thousand dollars a pound, because they're assuming that we're going to get fully regulated in eighteen months, that's what it'll be at a thousand dollars a pound. And within three years, that could be eight hundred dollars a pound. Outdoor grow is dropping dramatically from where it used to be eight, nine hundred dollars a pound, has dropped to four hundred to five hundred dollars a pound. And, excuse me, mixed light, which would be greenhouse-related, outdoor grow is selling as low as fifty dollars a pound, but averaging is to two to three hundred dollars a pound. So that is why the taxes need to be appropriately at different tiers. And what we show, that ten dollars a pound, or ten dollars a square foot, or two and a half, that was for indoor. Proportionally for mid-door, or mid, in the outdoor, the rates are even significant, it's like one to two dollars a pound, or three to four dollars a pound for the mixed light. But the key that we hear is that we have way too much product, and so that's why the price is going to be, everyone's going to be with a lot of pans and shovels, but no gold. And so you have to be realistic about those figures I showed you on the front end about sustainability, because we saw this happen in the other states, forty to seventy percent of the businesses are going to fail within three years. And what causes that? It's not necessarily, you know, where you're at, it's, in a community like yours, you don't just, you know, you've seen small towns like yours say, we want everyone that we can get here, you know, they have fifty businesses in there, and all of a sudden, they're going to fall harder. But when you have, you know, two of each or one of each, where you've got a, you know, half a dozen or no more than a dozen for, you know, your type of, your community, you're not going to feel that pain or failure rate because it's going to be more sustainable based on business models and making sure that they can be successful. And that's why those tax rates and everything else you do, if you have an industry in town, needs to be very mindfully thought out from that perspective. So here's the breakdown, as you can see, you're still kind of cover, you know, you get thrown into there as part of the triangle up to the middle range where you have all that, but those are a lot of the smaller ones. What you're seeing happening in the South, where most of that product was going in the past, is that all these big operators are building million-dollar square foot places out in Desert Hot Springs and Coachella, LA, and so they're going to be vertically integrated, and they're not going to need all that product. So those are the businesses up there that are going to be hurt by that because they're relying on moving that product to a degree to everyone they have been in the past, and they're not going to be able to do that, and so they're going to have to drop their price significantly, and even to compete with those that need product that aren't doing, producing their own product. The other problem that we had, which I pointed to here, is the thirteen-point-five million pounds, that's what's being produced in California, but the difference between the two-five and the thirteen, that's all going out of state to illegal markets. There's more money to be made in New York at forty-five-hundred dollars a pound than it is to sell it at a thousand pound, a pound in a regulated world. That's where the illegal product is going, is all the prohibition states, Texas and New York and Kansas and Oklahoma. So that's important to know as far as what the market is doing and how its dynamics is changing to do that. Not to scare that there's an opportunity, because I think regionally, for everyone, there is opportunity at a smaller scale to be mindful of that, but not next be the next, you know, the golden hub. So where you are at now is where you can continue to ban on at least the adult-use side of it, and then other considerations on the medical side. You know, consider some of the discussions we had regarding just your personal use and things that have, both on the land use and our, you know, restrictions, or putting some mindful things in an ordinance that would be for the personal use. Or option two, looking at, you know, looking at a discretionary permit consideration for expanding categories, but also for the adult use based on where it's going. And establish some processes with limited uses, is to be mindful of some of the things that we just talked about. So with that said, the decision is yours as you move forward and consideration of things. And I'd like to turn this back over to Garrett and go from there, or the mayor.
Thank you. We have about fifteen more minutes for questions, and maybe Ben, you could ask some of the questions that people have written down.
Yes, and if, I'll go out in the audience in a minute, I just have two. The first is actually a question to Garrett and myself, does Fairfax's anti-franchise ordinance apply to businesses in the areas where state law would allow adult-use businesses in Fairfax? And we discussed that, and yes, if there was a franchise-type retailer, for example, it is likely that Fairfax's anti-franchise ordinance would be applicable to that. Another question, and this is more directed to David, would, has there been any impact on home values where there's been dispensaries in close proximity to residential neighborhoods?
So in, especially in Colorado, there's actually data from the Colorado experiences that the home prices have gone up around them because, two things. One is around retailers, they are more conscious about security, they're making sure there's not looting going on, they're having to go through stricter requirements as far as what's around them to do that. They don't have the same issues or concerns as you would for a bar or other establishments that tend to poll certain things of that. And we talked about the good neighbor policy things, is where the cities that require or mandate that, and the ordinances that we draft, they're required to give their contact phone number and have a liaison, anyone within three hundred feet for them. So if there was complaints, instead of going to the city and complaining about it, they have a contact and they have to address and mitigate that, and so they go above and beyond their way to make sure that they're addressing that. So that's kind of improved neighborhoods that where there's mixed use, but typically it's in, you know, industrial or retail establishment or mixed use. But there are places where, you know, small towns where it doesn't, there's no way you would have zero businesses in town because there is just no buffers for some of that. So that's where that becomes very important, but it's been, it's been overall not a negative unless it already initiated a negative for the community based on just the communities already.
Other questions?
Well, one, which is in relating to buffers, it's my understanding that the trade, even though those are regulations at the state level right now, jurisdictions can adjust those and adopt their own version of the buffer regulations as they deem appropriate.
That's correct. So what Ben's referring to is the state law says it must be six hundred feet from the sensitive use buffers, and there's three. There's K through twelve schools, daycares, and youth facilities. However, it also says that, or as determined by the licensure, which is the state, or the local jurisdiction. For example, in the city of Pacifica, their planning commissioner, surprised me until he told me the explanation, reduced a retail establishment to be within two hundred feet from a daycare. And I was like, well, why would you do that daycare? And their logic was, is that these are two-year-olds running around with pacifiers, someone's holding their hand all day, they have no concept of what it is and they're not exposed to it. But for a K through twelve school, that they're more sensitive about, that they were very sensitive, that they wanted even a farther buffer from it. So some of the thinking process from a policy standpoint at a local level gives you the feel of flexibility to move that up and down, other than the state requirement of the six hundred-foot buffer.
Yeah, folks have questions? I've heard one quick first, and then a few...
Can I ask a quick one, Peter, while they're collecting? So you've worked with multiple jurisdictions of our size, seventy-five-hundred?
Yes.
And so if you were to look sort of on a average, just off the top of your head, what would you say is the average number of those who obviously haven't completely prohibited, number of retail establishments or commercial cultivation? What do you see generally in the towns of seventy-five-hundred who are entertaining this type of policy?
So we look at models in our recommendations for, the first thing you look at is your population. Typically, what you're going to say is, okay, our population is seventy-five-hundred, and you can, even at the higher average, is saying about thirteen percent of your population are consumers, right? So if we go back to that thing, about two thousand, about two thousand unique consumers of that per perma-te, or business, that would be, if you did the math on it, you may say, well, that's one-point-five. But then you look at, if you're looking at it from a business model, okay, what about the cities around you within fifteen miles? Typically, a consumer of, that will go to a dispensary will drive no more than thirty minutes. So if you've got surrounding communities that have prohibitions on there, you kind of expand that base and not count your seventy-five-hundred, but maybe you say, okay, our population really, for our retailers, is forty thousand or twenty-five thousand. And so then, that would look, you'd maybe say, we can absorb sustainable of two retailers for that model. So it's just a matter of how you want to look at it when making that determination.
Another question is, what enforcement is occurring with respect to home cultivation in other communities? And this would be in regards to number of plants, location, both in and out of the home, and with respect to apartments and condominiums?
So typically, what we're seeing, because condominiums and apartments are really, that's why on the thing is what cities are looking at is, as long as you have the owner's consent. Because most owners do not allow, will not allow it for apartments or condos if they own it, to allow that. Now, a lot of the cities, big or small, have restrictions on tobacco for those types of multifamily housing, and therefore, they just say that we're piggybacking on that requirement, that we're just adding this as one of those uses as well as tobacco.
Thank you. A question about potency levels and the increase, and are you aware of any regulatory approaches towards potency levels with respect to retail outlets? And also, is there any understanding about whether black market drives potency levels?
So the first part of the question is THC, and we were actually, for Berkeley, part of the direction we were given before they dropped their rates was, should we tax it on THC content? You know, have a higher rate like you do for hard alcohol, wine, beer, right? The higher the tax, the higher the thing. Well, there's a study for Washington that actually did this on potency and found out that, ironically, unfortunately, that, you know, eighty percent of the product all has high potency. So we would be, everyone, there's no disadvantage or incentivizing someone to do that or not do that. So that sticks, you know, makes it difficult to do that. The THC content is higher nowadays because of the quality of their product. This is in our Jerry Garcia days where, you know, people just grew it and it had a low potency, it's getting very, very high in the content, where the average is going somewhere between eighteen and twenty-five percent THC content for a flower, but you can see as high as eighty percent in an edible or an oil-based activity. And that just has to do with, you know, science and things of nature on that. So cities haven't gone to that extreme. I think that's more of a, I think, product Prop 64, and I know this question came up, is, where's our funding going on those taxes? It's supposed to go to look at studies both for health and social behaviors as part of it, both at UC Davis and UC San Diego, to look at studies to evaluate some of how those impacts have been occurring as we move into a world where we're having the more common usage of types of activities. And I think the story is still out, at least in California, even though the states in front of us have come and have done studies, and the Colorado Department of Health does an, they're mandated to do a study analysis every year. So if you actually go on their website, they have a very robust thing where they've looked at the different age groups, they look at the impacts of traffic collisions, they look at the different products from both the manufacturers, different types of edibles, different types of flowers, and the impacts of how those are. And it's a pretty good study if you have an opportunity to look at.
Where do you find that study?
Department of Health Services for Colorado. It's a mandated annual study that they have to do.
Yes, and this also deals with the state laws. What portion of state or local taxes would go to youth education and prevention?
So there are five buckets that go into the state excise tax. The first part is to tithe the administrative costs over the four percent to the three major agencies that oversee the program. The next bucket actually goes into the governor's office to look at economic development in cities and regions that have an impact on this as a result of a saturation of it being in their communities. And also to look at the impacts of those communities of how that money is spent, and there's discretion from the governor's office to how that money's spent. The third bucket then goes to the training for the two agencies, the universities I mentioned, but it also goes to the CHP to look at drug driving and studies associated with that, and training, training other officers for that. The fourth bucket then goes into the local agency, which has to do with grants, where the local agencies will get a percentage of it based on a population base. However, there's a caveat to how that money is even given to them. It says in Prop 64 that you get this grant money unless you prohibit outdoor grow, because obviously you have to allow indoor grow for personal use, and if you prohibit retail. Those are the two elements in there. So when the time comes, you're currently eligible because you allow retail and you allow outdoor grow to be, to get grant money, but because of your population, who knows what that dollar amount's going to be in the bucket when they actually provide it to you.
What's that local grant money earmark for? What is it?
Public safety and welfare, so, you know, pretty much fire, police, and any social programs that you may have related to the impacts associated with any impact. It could even address, eradicate personal use issues, right? It hasn't really been specifically defined, it's kind of a catch for all those safety issues. It's kind of a catch for all those safety issues and concerns that you've had to deal as a result of allowing it in your community, because now you, you're stuck to dealing with that. So it hasn't been that defined, other than what you, how to be eligible for it at this time. So the Department of Corrections will make that determination when there's actually money in the bucket.
So you mentioned the eligibility for those local grants is if you allow retail and outdoor grows?
For personal use.
Oh, for personal-
Because you only have to legally allow indoor. So as long as you don't prohibit those two things, those are the triggering points.
And you said Department of Corrections makes the final decisions?
So all the money is going to be put in a bucket. The Department of Corrections, the overseer of the Department of Corrections will be the one determining that if you qualify, and then making sure the methodology that they determine how you get dispersed the money will be done through that fund.
That's interesting. Corrections would be doing that, huh?
It's in Prop 64, that's how it's worded.
Okay.
So retail with what we have now with our medicinal, with our dispensary ordinance, that, that is considered-
It just says retail. It didn't say adult use or medical. It just says adult, I mean, retail. Because that's the, you know, right now, that's the landing point where no one, you know, very limited cities, there's 400 cities and counties in California and less than, I think there's only like 36 that are up and running and about 125, they're allowing any cannabis related, but only about 35 of them, they're actually allowing retail. So they're trying to incentivize or not discourage people to allow in the retail, because if the consumer can't get a product, it doesn't matter if you've got all these growers and manufacturers and no one can get the product, you know, as a consumer.
About five minutes, five seconds. One question. Can I just, you mentioned a 600-foot buffer, both schools and retail and manufacturing and other-
Well, it's any, it's, it's any of the activities. So the question is, as I mentioned, 600-foot buffer for the retail, she indicated retail, but it really is a 600-foot buffer for any regulated business, for daycare, K through 12 school, daycare and youth facility, or youth center.
I just have a follow-up question on that. It sounds like that buffer is to the discretion of any department or government entity in the town to enforce or revise. And my question is, is, I believe there are buffer regulations for selling alcohol. And if so, are those enforced by the states and does the town have similar discretionary power over that?
I'm going to have to defer the alcohol thing to your planner, because they probably deal with that on a day-to-day basis. That's not my, my expertise knowledge of it. But regarding-
Do you have other considerations?
Sure. But regarding the buffer, you are correct, as the local agency can redo it. What they do is they used it as a guideline, but they recognize that every makeup of a town, you know, their land use is different and unique, that they want, as long as the locals are okay with it, they can determine what that limitation is. However, it does say that the state can still, at their discretion, you know, if you, you do it, that it becomes too critical or you have a saturation issue, that they could then override that, but it would have to be at an extreme.
My question is, if the analogous situation with alcohol and the buffers that are required there, does the town have the same discretion?
Yeah, just a clarification that with alcohol, the regulations at a state level refer to over-concentration. Locally, typically, if you have an alcohol, a business that sells alcohol for off-premise consumption, it has to go through a discretionary process, a use permit is a typical requirement. There is no buffer per se. However, if it's close, within a certain distance to a school, they would have to get police review and, and sign off on that. So there's no buffer per se, though.
Okay. And one last question, and then we'll wrap up here. Brian?
Yeah, I'm curious, are there any data or frameworks that suggest when the prices in the secondary market would be equilibrium with the prices in the primary market?
So maybe I don't understand, when you say the secondary market, you're referring to-
You're referring to the black market.
Right, okay.
You're saying it's the secondary market, right? And, and prices in California and the secondary market have to be relatively low relative to what sort of the regulated prices are. And I'm wondering, based on your experience in the data, any idea when they might be equilibrium?
Well, right off the bat, the-
The question, just to be conservative, what is, when the black market presses and legal market presses?
It's legal federalized.
Yeah. Kind of know where it's at. So there are some moving parts here. First of all, I think one of the things that are going to be unique in a year from now is that right now, the black market or the secondary market, right now has the luxury of hiding behind a co-op and collective model. Most of the DEAs are not going after them because they can't get a conviction. January of 2019, co-ops and collectives go away. That is no longer defensible for a black market person to hide behind, and they can be arrested for selling that because they can't argue that this is for my co-op and collective. So that will be a key change that's going to transform even law enforcement taking activity, because now they can go along on a bark, they can bite. Because right now, they said, I'm not even bothering because it's a waste of my time. That'll be key. The second part, we talked about that cumulative tax, is that we have to look at is how do we make a price to be competitive in a regulator world to encourage people to come over and buy it in a regulator world versus black market? And there are some of those paradigm shifts occurring. First of all, black market does not tend to sell manufactured products. They sell only flour, for the most part. Secondly, millennials and centenials, as generations go on, are more comfortable of buying a legal market product because it's quality insurance, which they're very sensitive about. But secondly, that's all they're going to be knowing versus those of us that have grown up in prior years of a black world where I still have friends and growing it myself or I have other options. And that will transform, all those will help transform in that. But the reality is, is do we think the black market's going to go away 100%? Absolutely not. It's going to exist there for some time until there's more, more opportunities in law enforcement. And part of what the governor did with taking some of the excise tax, since the, the black market is so prevalent right now, he's earmarked millions of dollars to give it to the DEA and the local law enforcement to be able to have resources to go after them and aggressively attack them as part of the funding in order to support the industry. So I think all those will come into play in some time, but time will tell. That's really it.
To wrap up, Ben, perhaps you could let people know if one of the follow-up processes that we're going through, where our regulations are in terms of the legislation that's going to be implemented. Again, so, because I'm sure people will want to attend meetings where these regulations are being hashed out.
Yeah, correct. Well, currently, the discussions are at the town council level. We've gotten some good feedback at prior hearings on this topic. Obviously, this was very informative and will further guide that discussion. After the council has established broad parameters for the areas that the planning commission can look at, the planning commission, the majority of whom are in attendance tonight, will review that and make recommendations for those regulations, if indeed that is the recommendation that comes out or the direction from your council. They'll make recommendations to go back to your council. Currently, we're operating under a moratorium that's set to expire October 31st of this year. It can be extended for an additional year, so October 31st of 2019. And the hope is that we would make a decision on permanent regulations prior to one of those decisions, one of those deadlines.
Okay, well, thank you. And a special thanks for David McPherson with HDL Company. Thanks for coming on and thank you, everyone, for listening and for your very thoughtful questions. And with that, please roll over to Garrett. Thank you.
Thank you.